I will call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for an invocation and then Councilman Stepple leads us in the pledge. Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with the families of James England and Rick Ross this evening. Both people who are part of the family of the city of Cartersville who have experienced loss. And from this point, we ask you, we just ask everybody to take a moment of silence for whatever prayers they have in their hearts and minds. Show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeling, the role, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jace Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tompemeyer, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Here.
Hail, hail, the gang's all here. First order of business is the approval of the council meeting minutes from our June 7th meeting. Council had these a couple days in advance. Chair will entertain any additions, corrections, edits, or motions.
Mayor, did you see any additions or corrections? Make a motion, she'll pay.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have a series of second readings tonight of ordinances. Mr. Porte, if you'll please take care of those for us.
Yes, Mayor. The first item is ordinance recommending approval for next year's budget fiscal year 2012-13, which begins on July 1st. There was no change since the first reading. The total budget, if approved, is $145,106,290, and I recommend approval.
Questions for Mr. Porte on this first item? Is there any discussion or questions?
Mayor, just a comment, please. A lot of hard work has been done on this, but I think the public needs to know that we're talking about in this budget, a decrease of $12.6 million from the 11-12 budget and no city property tax increase, as well as a decrease in the number of our departments. And I'm proud of that. I know the council members are. I know you are, Mayor. And thank you to the department heads who, I know it was tough, and I know you worked on it April, May, June until the vote now, and just appreciate, appreciate all the work from you.
Well said. Any other discussion? And if there's none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. Next item, Dan.
The next item, Mayor, is an amendment to the utilities ordinance for the water and sewer rates as part of the overall budget. It will be a 5% across-the-board rate increase on our tiers, and I recommend approval. This will be effective again July 1st.
Any discussion or questions? And if there are none, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Everybody slowly step away from the microphone. That's my microphone, I think.
Mayor, again, I'd like to say something about the budget. I know none of us are glossing over budget issues. We've had meetings about it, but I also want the public to know that our water prices continue to be some of the lowest in the state. And the other thing I hope the public knows is that many times, that is really the difference that may be getting in industry, is to have such good water and to have low prices, and it makes a big difference to this community.
Well said, again. Thank you.
I think it's also important to invest in our infrastructure on a basis rather than wait till it's all out of date.
Absolutely.
Thank you to you both. We have a couple of first readings regarding planning and zoning. Mr. Manino.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first one on the agenda AZ 12-04 is an annexation and zoning request. It's part of the city's annexation initiative to try to get properties into the city that are completely surrounded by city jurisdiction or donut holes. This particular property is located along Corinth Road, which is off of Roland Springs, off of the 41 corridor. This property is a five-unit apartment building. Property is currently zoned R3 in the county. As with the other case on the agenda, these properties have been properly advertised and posted, and there appears to be no conflicts of interest. Individual city departments that review the cases for the city have reviewed this and had no objections to the request. The request is also sent to the county, and the county had no objection either. With that, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this annexation and zoning.
Okay. Thank you very much. Randy? Any questions or comments for Randy at this point? Thank you. And I will open up a public hearing relative to the zoning of, the zoning portion of the request for AZ 12-04. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing relative to the zoning portion of AZ 12-04. I will now open up a public hearing for the annexation portion of the request for AZ 12-04. And once again, anybody wishing to speak for or against may come forth and do so. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the annexation portion of AZ 12-04. This is the first reading. No vote will be taken this evening. We'll take this up for final consideration at the first meeting in July. Randy, next item.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is application Z 12-02. This is just a rezoning request for Terry Tumlin. This particular property is located at 2 Dixie Avenue and 329 East Cherokee Avenue. Along both roads, this property is also what's considered in the Parkway Corridor on our future development map. With that, the applicant is requesting zoning change from the MU commercial category to the GC commercial category. As with the previous case, it was reviewed by all the departments in the city that do review the applications. No objections from them. With that, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and does recommend approval of this rezoning from the MU to the GC zoning category.
Any questions for Randy at this point?
This is not the big two-story building? This is the one that's side it?
No, there's a bank. The bank.
The one, okay. And it's currently occupied?
It is not currently occupied. The applicant is present for this request if there are any additional comment or questions that I can answer.
Thank you, Randy. And I'll open up the public hearing for the rezoning case for Z 12-02. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the zoning hearing for, well, excuse me, Z 12-02. Do you have a question you'd like to ask the applicant? You can call them forward.
No, I think I'm good.
You can call them up voluntarily. We can drag them up.
When I saw the sign, for some reason, I thought it was another property because it wasn't, it was kind of in the middle, so...
If you go back, well, the property kind of comes to a point there, does it not?
Somehow, I thought I was looking at the wrong thing, so it's the bank and not the other one. So that's my, my lack of carefully looking at the easily identifiable photographs, which would have made it rather than just reading it and looking at the sign. So I now figured out which one it is, so I'm with you now.
Okay. Very good. All right, once again, no action required by council tonight. We'll take this up for final consideration in our first meeting in July. Next item is urban redevelopment plan quarterly report. Richard.
Thank you, Mayor. This item serves as a required quarterly update on activities related to the adopted urban redevelopment plan. First thing, home renovations. Last year, the city received grant money in form of improvement, specified projects for owner-occupied homes in North Town, and we've identified approximately seven homes adjacent to Gilmer Street, the intersections with Mary Street and Martin Luther King, and then one that's on the corner of Gilmer and Montgomery. And this fall, those renovations will take place. Second is new homes. Single-family homes are being built in the New, New, North Town and adjacent areas in partnership with Habitat and Housing Authority. We've got 118 Current Street at the corner of Porter Street, 407 Johnson Street, just east of Tennessee Street, 26 Martin Luther King near Gilmer Street, 145 Douglas Street, which is across from the old school building where nonprofit offices are in there right now, 105 Martin Luther King, ongoing construction where the park used to be, and 23 Fairview Street is just east of Tennessee Street. It was an old dilapidated house that has been torn down and is a lot where this fall, a new house will be built. On the job tax credits, the Opportunity Zones program continues to be popular. We've now worked with seven industries. The newest is surfacing strategies, which recycles artificial turf in Spring City Complex. The fourth is a cleanup. In April, Keep Artso Beautiful and the city had a successful Atco cleanup, where we had about 75 volunteers. And the last one is a conference, which kind of surprised us, but I think is going to be really successful. Cartersville was asked to serve as the host city for the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, and their conference will be September 11th to 13th at the Brown Center. There's going to be about 150 people there, and so at kind of the last minute, I got called in by the state folks. We were a GICH community from 2005 to 2007, and the conferences are on a rotating basis by alumni cities, and so this is our turn. To help defray costs, we've had some great folks step up as community sponsors. Belk, Hagler Architectural Systems, Jenkins &amp; Bowen, Longhorn, Shaw Industries, and Southland Engineering.
Question?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned a house on the corner of Gilmer and Montgomery. Is that, can I identify the house? Do you agree with me or not?
Sure. Essie Mallory's going to get some renovations to her house.
That's that big house on the corner there?
That is, it was built in the 90s, and it's got a fence around it.
Is that a wraparound porch on it?
It's not a large house. No, sir. At Gilmer and Montgomery, it's, I can't remember what number it is, but no, sir, it's not a large house.
The one I'm talking about is all...
I know the one you're talking about, it's not that.
It's not only there.
No, sir.
Okay. All right.
Goodbye and recognition.
I know some people that live there, you know.
Right. These are, the qualification for the renovations was owner-occupied, so it's taken us a few months to identify appropriately interested persons in this target area, but we think we've got a good group now. But there may still be one or two spots that may open up.
Any other questions for Richard? Thank you, sir. All right, we have a number of appointments to make this evening, and Mr. Manino, why don't you start us off with the appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and Council. The Board of Zoning Appeals has three members whose terms are expiring, and Ward number two, the, Mr. Stepp has appointed Hans Lujens, and the mayor, mayor's appointment is Lamahara Pendley. And in Ward six, we don't have an appointment yet, but we'll have one more meeting before the next BZA meeting. So it's recommended for approval of Mr. Lujens and Mr. Pendley.
Okay. Any discussion? And if there's none, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Grove, you have the next item.
Right. You have an application in your packet from Nikki Murphy to take the place of Brian Canty on the library board when his term expires on June 30th, and it's recommended you approve that.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Mayor, I know Nikki. I think she'll make an outstanding library board member and make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Porte?
Yes, Mayor. Well, we currently have an airport authority board made up of three members, one being a city appointee, one being a county appointee, and then the two, we decide on a third one. Our appointee's been Hans Lujens. I recommend him for reapproval of this board.
Once again, questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously once again. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. Got before you an agreement with PT Solutions. PT Solutions has been trying to meet with me for about the last three or four months, and we have gotten together, and they wish to lease the Senior Aquatic Center for one to two hours a week. It would be rented to them at a time that we are, on Thursdays, that we are closed. It would still give us enough time to do our cleaning. It would in no way inhibit that, and there is a contract that's been reviewed by the, by Cartersville's, by Keith Level, the city attorney, and I recommend approval of this contract. All the documentation, certificate of liability insurance, and E-Verify documentation has been received.
Any discussion?
Question, ma'am. Craig, this has been a very successful project, the Senior Aquatic Center, hasn't it? I mean, is there any other time that could be allotted to approve? Is this about the only?
Well, yes, it is the only time. You know, when, I think it's been about two years that I came back before y'all to try to give us a day for maintenance, and we decided to do Thursday mornings. We're in there by 8:30, and usually out by 12 or 1 o'clock, and that would still give us enough time to, you know, for them to come in and do their therapy for their patients, and then still be able to get out, and our patrons come in at 4 o'clock.
But for people who don't go out there, it's busy all the time.
Oh, it is.
It's a huge success.
It is. It's been very successful, especially, we've got several classes that are taught by our patrons, and the Zumba class will have as many as 50 or 55 in that class, and it has been very successful.
Any other discussion?
Just one more question. If, if we are finished with our cleaning in the morning, is there a reason why we aren't opening for our patrons during this hour? Or is that typically a not busy, historically not busy time, so this would make an appropriate time for someone else to have exclusive access to it?
Well, what, when, when I came before you to ask for maintenance time, we were going to do it, I can say, that Thursday morning, and, you know, we felt like that we needed, at that time, we needed that full eight hours to do that, and, you know, so we've kept the 4 o'clock opening, and we've been able to, I guess, fine-tune our maintenance and cleaning to, we are in and out in, I'd say, four to five hours, and we still have those extra hours. I mean, would it be possible to open earlier for our patrons? And yes, it would be. I mean, that's, that's a possibility. We haven't had that request, and, you know, our clientele seems, I won't say pretty much trained, but we, but we, you know, we've had our set hours, and they've become used to the 4 o'clock opening on Thursdays, and it's, it's really worked out very well.
Has there been any other physical therapy companies who've had these type of conversations with us? Is this the only one?
That's the only one I have spoken with. It's the only one that's approached me about it.
And we probably don't have a window of opportunity if there were another company who then said, "We're interested as well."
Well, no. At this point in time, there would not be any extra, any extra time. However, this, this is just a six-month contract from July to this, to the end of the year, and it's, you know, it was put in there for two reasons. It was put in there for PT Solutions as well as us, and, you know, if it doesn't work out after that six months, then we'll, you know, we'll do something else.
But this is, this contract being in place will help offset some of the cost of operating the facility.
Well, that's, that's correct. Well, of course, when they're open, you know, we have to have an attendant in there, and well, we have to have a lifeguard in there, which is one of our attendants, so they will be paying that salary as, as well as, so we will be earning some, some extra, some extra revenue.
Any other questions or discussion?
So when we get to the end of this year, we will have discussion about whether...
We sure will. The contract, to renew the contract, if we decide we want to renew it, it will, it will come back before city council.
My concern is the same one Laura expressed, and that is, those who pay the taxes might have the first access.
Any other discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
What's the approval?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry to disturb you. Mr. Porte, you've got the next...
Yes, Mayor. First item is our health insurance. On our health insurance plan, we have prescription drug coverage for our employees, and we've been looking at another product that will work within, with that product, United Healthcare currently covers our employees. Over a 12-month period, we have about $845,000 expended between what the city pays and what the employee pays in co-pays prescription plans. With that, been going to look to two different companies to provide prescription drug services at a discounted rate or a lower rate that will not affect employee co-pay costs, as well as the pharmacy that fills the prescription. Been able to find DataRx, a company that will do that. The overall savings to the city itself or to the plan itself, where this money can be used within, for medical insurance costs, is about $78,000 annually over this time period if we switch to DataRx. The reason being is DataRx provides the ingredients for the prescriptions at a lower price than United Healthcare. Basically, United Healthcare is making additional profit on prescription drugs that are filled. So I recommend a change to DataRx. There will be ongoing costs with United Healthcare, about $10 per employee per month, which is factored into the $78,000 annual savings. I do anticipate at renewal, if we stay with United Healthcare on January 1 of 2013, that I will negotiate a contract at a lower rate than $10 per employee per month. So the StateRx contract is a three-year, well, it's the rest, starting August 1st through December 31st, and one-year renewal after that, assuming the city council approves it. And then, well, we renew every year, every calendar year, our health plan, so I'll try to negotiate a lower rate with United Healthcare come January 1, which will reduce or actually increase the savings overall if I reduce the $10 per employee per month cost. But I recommend approval to DataRx. What we anticipate doing, if it's approved, the employees, we're going to make an August 1st effective date. Employees will still have only one card, DataRx and United Healthcare card will be combined, so they won't have to present one card to the doctor and a different card to the pharmacist. So we have one card combined, so the employees won't see a difference, unless the pharmacy actually will get an extra 25 cents per prescription filled under this plan because that's the way the breakdown is on the cost.
You might have covered this in work session, but the, on our, in our agenda packet, it says the savings are approximately $120,000.
Correct.
And you just spoke of $78,000.
The reason for that, I was initially told there was a $10,000 one-time free fee from United Healthcare, and I found, since, found there's initial cost for them to reprint the cards, but then there's the ongoing of $10 per employee per month card cost. That's why the difference is less.
And are we sure they can do that? Are they authorized to do that? Do they have an agreement with us?
Yes, they have an agreement with us, and like I said, that...
That's in there?
It's, it's in, when we negotiated right a couple years ago, we were negotiating a discounted rate on some fees initially. This is one of the things that, going through this process, and Jace is probably where, these medical insurance providers, they make a lot of money. They've been, been really hard to pull away from them, this pharmacy claims, because they make additional profit.
Do we have Keith or David look at it?
I can have them look at that, yes.
Usually, just to add a little bit to it, is when the carrier comes in and they're going to book, and you can use many, many different analogies for this, but when a company basically, and it's very tough on entrance carriers because demographics can change from month to month. We could hire 15 new 60-year-olds and fire 15, 25-year-olds, and our rates are still booked in. So a carrier, when they look at it, they're trying to get, you know, a good, solid number that they feel as though that they're happy with renewing, that they can still provide coverage, and, you know, in turn, have profit. When you, middle of the year, decide you're going to take away the prescription drugs, even if they're losing or making money on it, that's part of the premium that they knew that they were getting when we signed up in January that now we're taking away from. So for them, they're saying, "Well, look, you know, if you want an out, this is, this is what we've got." So come January, he will have more of a leg to stand on because we can say, "For our renewal coming in 2013, you know the prescriptions are not in there," which means they'll probably fluff it up on the medical side if they've got a, if they know a number that they've got to get to. That's the reason for the $10 fee, and that's not uncommon.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to make sure they're authorized to do it. If we've got an agreement with them upfront, I would think that that would be called out in there if we took it away from them, that could charge us $10 bucks. I want to make sure he looks at it, that they're authorized to do it.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion?
Just one. So there's no issue between United Healthcare and DataRx filling the exact types of medications that are currently being prescribed? There's no inconsistencies in lists or approved or unapproved? It's going to be just a smooth transition from one to the other?
We're going, we're going through, once this agreement's approved by the city council, myself and Dwight Hale sit down with DataRx and go through. We're going to match the formulary we already have in place, and the drug, you know, everything that's covered under Tier 1, because we do have a couple tier levels, and that'll be the same coverage that employees are currently paying for. There's not, nothing's going to be excluded, and we've already shown them, they're already aware of what the formularies are, so there will not be anything changing from the employees' perspective.
Dan, how do we, what is the basis, or how would you get feedback if this was not as seamless as it appears to be?
The employees will let, let me know if there's any issues out there. I mean, I've, actually, I talked to one city retiree today, had, you know, had a question about the medical plan, general, getting a question about a claim being, not being paid. I've had other retirees and other employees call me up or call Dwight or Judy Jones, and, you know, we got, walked them, walked them through that process and make sure that claims are being paid.
So one of the three of you?
Yes.
Judy'd be able to tell you pretty quick.
I bet she would.
Yeah.
I guess my only other, the only other thing I need to make sure I understand before we move on is, to understand what Jace was saying, is if we change the RX program now, then when we get to renew two, three years from now...
Well, it'd be, in every year, we look at the health insurance plan, and this plan, this StateRx, again, will expire the end of December like all contracts, and it's automatically renewed for up to three one-year periods if the council doesn't take action. However, the medical insurance, we will look at again. We'll, we'll shop, the broker will shop it out, make sure that we're getting the best rate that we can based on our overall medical insurance claims as well as our pharmacy claims.
I guess what I'm trying to weigh out is if we're changing, and then, as Jace put it, they're going to fluff the medical part of it in the end, are we really doing ourselves any good flip-flopping?
That's where I go back and, with the broker, and look at our claims history and say, "These numbers do not agree with what the renewal should be," and look at that every year with them, and they come up with their initial number, and it's, you know, we go through negotiation tactic and basically get the number down to agreeable amount.
Okay.
Mr. Grove, would it be your recommendation that, in a motion, there would be pending the approval of the city attorney?
Sure, please.
Thank you. And if council would like to make a motion that would include that, or any other motion that they would like to make. Chair would certainly entertain.
Make a motion to approve DataRx agreement for pharmacy claims processing based on city attorney's review.
Shouldn't we say subject to approval?
Subject to city attorney's...
Approval.
Approval.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, Mayor, is a property and casual renewal is effective July 1 for our fiscal year. We got the... We got the, got the renewal numbers from the broker, went through that process. Again, that guy, just addressing you, Kerry, the initial renewal number came in about three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. Sat down with them, went through the process and negotiated the renewal rate of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. I explained in the work session, part of this increase is due to, they have reevaluated our building values, they've increased them, the number of different buildings within the city, about nine-point-eight million, which they went through an analysis and said, "Based on the square footage of the building, the type of construction, these buildings are undervalued and they have, again, basically, and it's due to market conditions, they've had a number of claims over the past year or so." For instance, they insure travelers' insurance and, and they're not the only carrier, they insure a lot and there was a county in Alabama basically wiped out a lot of the school system and property over there. So they're, they paid a lot of claims. You know, Greg's got a, a claim on here later on. We've been fortunate, we've only had a few, but that's part of the reason why the premiums increased, but I do recommend approval of this renewal of three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty dollars to travelers' insurance for our property and casualty coverage.
Any discussion on this item?
Mayor, I'm wondering if this includes our new buildings?
At this point in time, the builder, the contractor is covering that. I want, I've met with our broker last year to let them know that we're going to be building these two buildings. We're not taking ownership of the building until we get the certificate of occupancy and that's when we will begin insuring these buildings.
We had that discussion this morning, us of what happens if they burn down while they're going up and reassured.
But this price goes up, Sam, when we take over the new building?
It would. I was saying that we're talking about replacement values while they've gone up.
It will, basically, we'll be paying at the, you know, the new, the final construction value of the public safety headquarters and fire station at that time. There will be a premium increase for those two new buildings, just like when we take ownership of, on vehicles every year. I don't have to report except anything over a hundred thousand. So last year, when we had the new fire engines come on, we had to pay additional for that, but regular, anything under a hundred thousand on auto, there's no additional premium cost. From the budget standpoint, actually, I have an increased number from what you've proven in the budget recently, there's about, with, based on this year's number, about eighty thousand dollars included in the budget number for, for deductibles, 'cause we have a twenty-five-thousand-dollar auto deductible, if it's, if it's our liability, we have a ten-thousand-dollar building deductible, so those are built into the overall budget. So when we do have an accident, we do have coverage and, you know, funds to pay for those deductibles.
So Dan, this is actually replacement value, not property value?
Well, it, for our buildings, we have current replacement value. So if something were to blow down or be, you know, burn up by fire, it's full hundred percent replacement value.
Yeah, it kinda flies in the face of a lot of property values coming down.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Yeah.
But I understand if, if they're going on previous claims from other...
Right. We have to look at what it would take to rebuild them.
Thank you. Do we have separate flood insurance?
Flood insurance is, is part of this, but there is a much higher deductible for that if we were to be hit with flood. But that's kinda typical, you don't cover, you don't have a lower, low deductible for that 'cause it's, for our standpoint, we're not in a lower area.
So it is covered?
It is covered, but I believe it's a hundred thousand dollar deductible.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion? If there is none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last item I have is a Manager Plus software, which we use for our garage fleet maintenance. This is an upgrade to our existing software. It's gonna allow us to do better reporting and tracking of our vehicles and equipment. The overall cost to this with, including the training and annual maintenance is seven-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents and I recommend approval of this purchase.
Any questions for Dan on the maintenance of the fleet maintenance software update? Not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Manager Plus fleet maintenance software as proposed.
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Don? Bobby, you're on, Doug.
Mayor, council, come, come to you tonight. The electric department is, is in need of a twenty-five-hundred KVA spare transformer, pad-mounted transformer, to be used as backup for our larger industrial customers. And we, we've gone out for, gotten three bids on a replacement and the three bids, we, we look, we look at two factors in, in bid process. We look at the actual shelf cost to, to purchase the unit and we look at the, we look at the total ownership cost that you'll, you'll spend over a thirty-year period for this transformer. And so those are an industry standard that we, we look at and we've, we've got the three bids back and the, the bid that, for the, for the transformer that we would like to recommend came in at thirty thousand dollars and thirty thousand and eighty-one dollars. And this is slightly, it's not the, it's not the lowest bid, but it's, if you look at the total ownership cost over the life of the transformer, it's, it's eight thousand dollar savings. So we recommend that we go with, with this unit.
And what is the vendor that that's from?
Uh, the vendor is Ermco. One of the vendors is GE and the third vendor was ABB.
And they're recommending?
And our recommendation is we go with the Ermco unit, it had, with the actual cost of thirty thousand and eighty-one dollars and this has a total ownership cost of eighty thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, which is approximately nine thousand dollars cheaper than the, the other comparable units.
Any questions for Don on this item? Not, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the Ermco unit for thirty thousand and eighty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion is second. All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You guys.
Mayor, we've got, Federal Communication Commission has come out with some new mandates and all of our communication equipment's gonna have to be narrow-band compliant as of January first, two thousand and thirteen. And as it were, Public Works has the oldest repeater on, on the tower on Reservoir Hill of any of the departments in the city and it can't be upgraded. We, I got a price from Cusa Valley Communications who maintains all of our tower equipment right now, currently, of six thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars to replace the repeater with a Motorola one-hundred-watt unit. We've also got to update all of our two-way radios in our, in our vehicles too, but we've got that covered, I think, for next year's budget. But we'd like to make a recommendation to make this purchase now. Budgeted funds are available. This will help us get started to get ourselves in gear for the new federal mandate.
Bobby, does the, does the old repeater, does that have any kind of resale value at all of the scrap metal?
No, sir, it's just scrap, yes.
Okay. Check technologies, check... All right, there any questions on this item or not? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to make the purchase from Cusa Valley Communications as outlined.
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Come on back up here, Greg, please.
Yes, Sir Mayor, this is a bid award for the, for a new roof for the Carisal Civic Center. When we were getting our budget estimates coming up, the, it was noted that there was hail damage on the, for the Civic Center roof. The insurance company was called in and there, there was substantial damage. We took, we took bids from three vendors for, for a new Civic Center roof and I am gonna recommend the, the low bid from Altop Roofing in the amount of fifty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. This is not a budgeted item, but it is under the city's insurance policy. The city's already received around twenty-six thousand dollars in reimbursement and they will receive additional reimbursement when it's turned into the insurance. And I recommend approval of this bid for, for all documentation has been received.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question. I mean, I live close to the Civic Center and I don't remember a storm.
I, I, I don't know when, I don't know when it occurred. I mean, it was, it was probably...
I may, I may go home tonight.
Well, uh, we also...
Is it this kind of roof? It may not be the asphalt roofs that are...
It's, it's not that, but the, the, the library roof was also checked and, and it did not have damage either, so.
Okay. So just this flat roof?
It, it is. Well, it's not flat, but it's, it's, it's flat enough where it has to have a TPO system. But I recommend the low bid for me.
And any other questions? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase from Altop Roofing.
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Yes, Sir Mayor, our gymnastics booster club, we, we were in need of some equipment for our, our gymnastics program. We have a specialized equipment, AAI, which is one of the reasons that the Appalachian gymnastics chose our gym in the nineteen-ninety-six Olympics for practicing. But this, this is a sole source bid from the equipment guy there, the distributors of AAI equipment. The gymnastics booster club is donating to the city an amount of ten thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which is, as it turns out, is the exact amount of the equipment purchased. And I recommend the, accepting the donation from the gymnastics booster club and purchasing this equipment. All E-Verify documentation has been received.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. Mr. Ballack, you've got the last.
Mayor, council, the first item we have is basically a restocking of inventory for our distribution collection. It's driven partially by federal regulations, which require us to shift over to no lead brass. We received prices for this inventory restocking from four different suppliers. Kendall Municipal Supply submitted a low bid in the amount of twenty thousand, ninety-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This will be paid for from the maintenance to meters and settings account. We recommend purchase of this from Kendall Municipal Supply in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand, ninety-nine dollars, thirty-four cents.
Any discussion? Anybody with a motion?
Move the acceptance of the bid from Kendall Municipal Supply.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Sorry, I was reading.
Next item.
This next item, we received bids for a one-ton truck with a dump bed. This is to replace a vehicle that was totaled in a wreck earlier this year. Bids were received from four different suppliers. Wade Ford submitted a low bid in the amount of twenty, or thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in hand. This was not a budgeted item due to it being from an accident. It will be charged to the motor vehicles account. We recommend the purchase of this vehicle from Wade Ford in the amount of thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars.
Any discussion on this item? If not, chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, we don't know if this is a twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, do we? We, we discussed that sound.
We did in the work session. The, the spec sheet went out and it said either eleven or twelve and so there is a disparity, disparity between, or a significant one, between two different four-gender ships. But if, if the bid, the low bid meets the specs that were issued, I really don't, I see it as an odd issue.
Okay. Just wondering if we knew.
Just one other item. Would ask that people here in the city and community keep in their prayers the family of James England. James was the second shift operator at our water treatment plant. After he completed his shift Tuesday night on the drive home, a little after midnight, he was killed in a car wreck. He leaves behind a wife of twenty years and a eleven-year-old son and a fourteen-year-old son. It's just a terrible tragedy. He was a very devoted father and husband and very well-liked by all his coworkers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To appreciate those comments. Ed, we still do have the need for a motion and a second on the proposed or the truck proposal.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favoritists saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Greg, we just hiked last night. I can't be honest.
We did have our summer solstice hikes, last Saturday morning hike and our, and our evening hike had, had good crowds, but we have our, our next moonlight hike coming up Tuesday, July the third. And then we also have our fireworks hike the next night, July the fourth, so we'll have, be able to get some good hiking in the first week of July. Go up to David G., your chair overlook.
David, our chair overlook.
I won't be there.
Is there a sign, but not in spirit, right?
Unless you get a helicopter to take me up.
Any other business before council this evening? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Remove. Do it.